Okay, I think I'll go ahead and get started. And if you haven't got your coffee yet, feel free to get up and get some coffee. But I welcome you here early in this morning. It's kind of a cold day. I think that's why everybody was hurdling around, huddling around the coffee in the back of the room. But I'm really glad you're here. My favorite people are here this morning. A lot has happened since last time we talked, including a wonderful Thanksgiving four days off. How many enjoyed your four days off? Yes. How many talked about politics at the table? We started to, and then somebody mentioned the watery mashed potatoes, which I made, and that got us way off subject. And we kept talking about the potatoes instead of other things, which was good for our family. So anyway, I'm glad you all had a restful break. I'm assuming you did because we have a little bit of a marathon here, sprint, I guess a sprint towards the end. So we're excited to have the opportunity to do that. So I have a lot to talk to you about, so I'll talk kind of quickly because this is advertised as a town hall that would leave you to believe that we would get both of us to talk. So I want to be truth in advertising and have a chance for that. But I do want to tell you what's going on in the chancellor's office. And I also want to preface this, but you'll recognize some of these slides because some of the things we're going to talk about, I'll go over quickly, haven't changed a whole lot, but I want to remind you about them because it's seldom that I go to a meeting where everybody knows everything that's going on. Because I know you all have other things to do besides come to my town halls. So I apologize in advance if you hear things a second time, but it's for the masses. Okay? So before we get started, we have two special guests here today. I've probably got to embarrass them by putting their pictures on here. But we have an old colleague, not an old colleague, a previous colleague of mine from Montana State, Nancy Cornwell is here. These two ladies are part of the ACE Fellows Program, and they are also friends of Ann Bartlett, our new dean of IAS, who was an ACE Fellow, I think, a year ago. Is Ann here? I think it was a year ago at Portland State, one of our kind of sister institutions, and knows them and invited them to our campus. We're really glad to have them here. We also have Chow Chi Ho. Chow is a professor in the Department of Biomedical, Chemical, and Environmental Engineering at the University of Cincinnati, but she's placed in Duckville, I mean, in the University of Oregon. And you're placed at the College in New Jersey. Beautiful campus. I had the opportunity to go there a couple of years ago. Why don't you stand up so they can see you? Yes. So they had the privilege of staying at the Morano last night, and they're seeing Tacoma, and they're seeing some of other sister schools around the coast. But they'll be here all day, so reach out, talk to them, tell them about your campus, and we're glad to have you here. Okay, what are we going to do today? Well, we're going to debrief what's happened since the last time we were all here. We're going to talk about a little bit of new organizational development. Not a whole lot has happened in that arena, but we'll kind of see where we are. We're going to talk more about the Race and Equity Series, and I'll answer some questions along those lines. A lot of people have questions about what's going on, what's going to happen next. A little bit about the Law School. We don't know a whole lot more, but I'm going to tell you what I do know. Enrollment snapshot, where we landed and where we plan to go. We'll talk a little bit about budget development because that's important to all of us as we move forward. We'll talk about where the strategic planning or charting our course is right now, what phase that's in and the implementation of that. We'll talk briefly about the campaign launch, and then we'll have questions and discussions. So everybody ready? I can tell, you're ready. Here we go. Okay, what happened since we were here before? I don't know about all you, but October was a blur. We had so much going on on our campus in October, and if we weren't doing it, we were getting ready for it. The first couple of weeks, we were getting ready for it. But I felt like everything worked like a charm because of the good people that we have here responsible for these things. But we love it when we have the Board of Regents here. That was at the beginning of the month. They were here right in this room for lunch on the 13th. We had some excellent presentations. Dr. Labbett had a chance to talk about what's going on in the faculty hiring process. I was really proud of that presentation. We're doing a lot of good things. And then we talked about the strategic plan. And you were very well represented, not necessarily by me, but by Professor Bonnie Becker. Amanda Figueroa talked, and also Carl Smith talked, and told the Regents about why we're doing this strategic plan, who the students are that we serve in this strategic plan, and about the implementation. They were very impressed. They, I think, every single one of them sought me out individually and told me how impressed they were with our plan. And one, the chair, I don't know if this was an insult or a compliment, but he came and kind of put his arm around me and said, "Boy, this is a wonderful plan." I can tell it was done by an engineer. I thought, "Oh, my goodness." That's the last thing I wanted because I don't want it to be Mark's plan. I want it to be our plan. But I think he meant well. He meant it was very well organized. So that was a compliment, wasn't it? Yes, yes. So that was a positive day. I really felt good about that day. And they actually got a sneak peek to our strategic plan kickoff, which was the following Monday. I, of course, enjoyed that event. I know my friend Abraham enjoyed that event. He sent me a telegram and told me he enjoyed that event. We also had the Race and Equity kickoff. That was very well attended. Thanks to Sharon and her staff for attracting Bree Newsom here. Bree stayed a long time. She really engaged with our students. It was a wonderful event. We had more than just this debate. We had several debates. We hosted debates on campus. We hosted some debates off campus. And I know Dean Bartlett attended several of those on behalf of her school. The one was very well attended here. It was the same night as Bree Newsom. It ended up being a very close race, a very, a race full of integrity. I was proud to host that on our campus. We launched the campaign. When I say "we," I didn't have a whole lot to do it, but I rode on the bus to the campaign launch. But I think that's the first time, you know, I commute to Seattle quite a bit, maybe once or twice a week, some weeks. This week, I don't have to go at all. But often, I go there once or twice a week. I think that was the first time ever in my commute to Seattle I had champagne. It was really nice. I guess it was on the way home we had the champagne. But that was a great event. I was very proud to be a University of Washington employee. We had our niece with us, who has applied to graduate school at the Other UW up at the Seattle campus. She's applied for a PhD program, and she went to that event with us. And when she got done, she thought, "My goodness, if I was on the edge of deciding whether or not I want to come here, I'm coming here if they invite me." That's a long shot to see if she gets invited, but we'll see. Anyway, the Native American supposing was really outstanding. I only had the opportunity to be there for about an hour, but what I saw was good. Sharon assures me it was very well attended. We would like to have more of you all attend that event, though, to showcase our campus. They took a tour. That was here. And then the annual Faculty Appreciation Staff Pie Day. You know, ladies, if you would have come last Wednesday, you could have had pie rather than come to the town hall. So next year, or next time you visit, you would know. Also, the Apple Cup. Who watched the Apple Cup? Yes. We did very well, and that catapulted us. If you've read the paper today, we are in that fourth spot in the college championship series. So it's up to us. We have Colorado this Friday, right, Friday, Friday afternoon. If we beat Colorado, there's no way they can leave us out of that championship series. What we want now is to move up to third, so we don't have to play Alabama first. Yes. Okay, leadership development. Well, I don't know a whole bunch about these searches. I did have the opportunity to charge this first search about a month ago, but they're all in good hands. They're all kind of in the quiet phase right now. Melissa charged the other two searches, the two inaugural dean searches. But I did have the opportunity to visit with Alberto Pimentel and Ryan Crawford, our two consultants on these searches. They were at the same meeting I was at in Austin about two weeks ago. And they sought me out, and they told me that's going really well. There's a lot of excitement. The fact that these are inaugural deans is exciting people and getting a lot of interest. And the fact that our student affairs person is both enrollment services and student affairs, that's attracting a lot of attention. So I look for positive things. And if you want to know more about these searches, talk to these people. They're mostly in the room. They can tell you more about where they are. They can't violate the confidentiality of the searches, but they can tell you what's going on, where they're at. We staged the interviews in the spring or winter, in the winter. I don't know when, March. But they're staged, so is March, spring, or winter?
Both.
It's both. Okay, it's both. We've got them, so the interviews are going to be like separate weeks. So we'll have that search fatigue again by April. A couple of other ones that aren't decided yet, but we need to get to work on them. I need to visit with Dr. Labbett, the Executive Director of Global Affairs. It's in excellent hands right now. Professor Lisa Hoffman is leading that at interim basis, but she is going on sabbatical. So, and I bet you she goes on sabbatical no matter what I ask her to do. She's going on sabbatical. So we need to think about what we're going to do with that. And also, the Associate Vice Chancellor for Educational Outreach. That search failed last summer, and we got to decide on that. And one reason I really want to kind of accelerate this is our Federal Way partnership. I've talked about this several times. It's actually coming closer to fruition right now. About 10 of us are going there next Monday, and they got the report back, which does show a need and an interest in a presence. That's the big question, is what is the UW Tacoma presence going to be like? Well, whatever it's like, it's going to be better than a WSU presence in Federal Way. I know that. And I also know that we will do it in conjunction with Highline. I've talked to the president of Highline several times. They're interested. They were there before. So we'll have some kind of joint presence, probably starting with a person or maybe a shared person that would be in an office, maybe a conference room. We could teach a couple of courses there. We have a lot of faculty that live in Federal Way. Maybe there's a core class or a general ed class that we could teach there on location, and students from Federal Way could go there that day or something. We don't know. But they want to have some kind of presence by fall 2018. So we got to get started doing that. And it's going to be UW Tacoma, not UW, UW Tacoma, Federal Way. How's that sound? UW Tacoma, Federal Way. Anyway, more to come. All right, Law School. I'll show you the slide, but I won't go through all the details. But it's important to remember that several things have to be in place. First of all, we don't want a Law School project to interfere with the other things that we're doing. We have a new strategic plan that we've launched. So if we do the Law School, we want to do it in conjunction with these in parallel. We need to have the support, which we do, of the UW and the UW Law School and all that. But we also need to have a sizable state allocation to do that. So that's kind of the phase that we're at right now. But before we would ask for that, we have a feasibility study that's in progress, and it's just about finished. I expect it any day now. We've actually got pieces of it. One piece we got was on the admissions data for the other law schools in the state of Washington in this region, and it's not robust. I have to tell you that right now. The admissions have been tight. It's competitive. Likewise, we have a study that was done, that I've just seen the preliminary part of what the anticipated demand is of students that are graduating from degrees that are thinking about Law School and from both public law firms or governmental law firms and private law firms, what their outlook is. Those things are not really robust, but we have to get the whole picture. They also visited with many community supporters, the Tacoma Community Law Foundation. They visited with tribes that are interested in having tribal law as a part of a Law School here. So I need to get the whole report and read the advantages, disadvantages, risks, and then we'll have to make a decision pretty soon what the next steps will be. So hopefully, the next time we talk, I can tell you kind of what we're anticipating with respect to the Law School. Okay, the Race and Equity Initiative. You recognize this slide before. And for our guest, the Race and Equity Initiative is an initiative by our president that she launched when she was still interim president a little over a year ago now, probably a year and a half ago. She launched this initiative, and when I talked in May, you may recall that I had a photograph of some chalk artwork on the sidewalk. You remember that, where the students had charged us to have more action than just the talk? And that kind of affected me, and affected all of us. We wanted to start having action, although, you know, the Race and Equity Initiative is designed to force the conversation, to get us all talking about that. So after I saw that in May, and we talked about it, then, you know, we were all upset by this rapid series of things, the catastrophe that happened in Orlando and the shootings that were rapidly happening after that. It upset everybody, and luckily, we have a lot of people on campus who care. So Ed and Kathleen and several people quickly organized a standing together event. Remember that this summer? And at the time, I was standing there, listening to them talk, and could see all the people, and maybe you recognize yourself in that picture, struggling with what we do as a campus. So I stepped forward and said, "We'll commit to having a series of active discussions where we'll decide what to do. We'll learn best practices. We'll learn how to be activists in these areas that are important to us." So I'm really glad that we started that because we have to prepare ourselves. Now we need, know, you know, like a Boy Scout, we always need to be prepared. In a higher education institution, it's all of our responsibilities to prepare ourselves daily for what's going on around us in the world because our students are looking to us to know that. Doesn't matter if you're a professor, staff person, or what. So I'm glad we had that. The outcome of that day was this series of active discussions. And Sharon has a group that's been working on this. I won't mention all the names, but several of you in the crowd. And they put together a series of events. One of the events was Bree Newsom, and I'll talk about a couple of other ones pretty good. So that is great. But we have to continue to worry about, or not worry about, but to do our actions. We'll do the talks, and we'll continue to learn, but we have to do things. So I'm proud of our campus. Many various areas of our campus are doing a lot of actions. I'm going to highlight a few of those. But also, one of the things that I'm most proud of is that we were already actively working on the strategic plan while all this was going. And it surrounds you right now, but I think I put a couple of them here. I could put all six of them up here. But the strategic plan that came out in June, right before these things were happening, really sets the stage for how I want, I hope you want, UW Tacoma to respond to what's going on around us. And if you look at what we say, look at this first one. Empower students to achieve their dreams. Well, their dreams, I'm sure, aren't to put their head in a hole and worry about what's going on around them. They want to get the tools so they can change what's going on around them if they don't like what's going on around them through civil, you know, well-described processes. You know, we don't want anarchy. So we have a responsibility to help our students, empower them to achieve their dreams. They got to do their work. They can't come to your class unprepared, those kinds of things. But we've said that, and we believe that still. We believe it before the election, and we believe it after the election. Likewise, equity, our statement on equity is very, very powerful. Get choked up when I read this. We are grounded in social injustice. This is our campus. And embrace the assets of our diverse communities. I learned this the first week I was here. I attended a conference with several of you. Amanda was there, Sharon was there, and I was introduced to some of these concepts. It's a wonderful campus we have that believes in these kinds of things. Likewise, our culture. We've charged ourselves with having a culture on this campus that's respectful, productive, and inclusive. That's important for us. So what am I showing you this for? Well, as we were launching this at the strategic planning rollout, when I was sitting there by Abe, thinking about all this, and Carl, where's Carl? Carl got up, I don't want to embarrass him, but Carl got up and thought he was going to get in trouble for going off script. Remember that? Oh, man, he didn't get in trouble. I think he encouraged a lot of us to think deeply about what we do. It changed kind of my thought process. You know, I felt a whole lot better about UW Tacoma that day because I know Carl. I work closely with Carl. And he fortunately had the microphone. A lot of you don't have the microphone, but I know a lot of you share Carl's commitment to our students. And a lot of you, all of you do. So I feel really good about our campus. And you're going to think this is really hokey, but I can't help it. I am kind of a hokey person. But I am pretty narrow-minded when it comes to music. I've been a Neil Young and a Bob Dylan fan for about 40 years. And both of them have been around. They're both still kicking, too. Do we have any Neil Young, Bob Dylan fans in the room? All right, yes, yes. And I don't deviate much. But I married Kelly. Kelly is not a Bob Dylan or a Neil Young fan. She's a Tori Amos fan, and I've learned to like Tori. And you know, Tori actually played a few lines of a Neil Young song at her concert because I asked her to. I can't believe she did that. So I'm a Tori Amos fan now, too. I'll tell you about that later, but not in front of all of you at one time. Anyway, I lived in Montana, and it's complicated when you live in Montana when all your relatives are other places. She's shaking her head, Nancy knows. So I was driving with my son, who lived in Montana, to Colorado. I am getting somewhere at this point, by the way. I'm going off on a story. So I was driving to Colorado to get my daughter, and we were all going to fly to Illinois to see my parents and then go to Kelly's house for Christmas because I wasn't married yet. That's when Kelly and I were just an item. We weren't married yet. But anyway, my daughter hadn't done her shopping yet and wanted to buy something for Kelly, so she brought Kelly an Avett Brothers CD. Anybody know the Avett Brothers? Not me. We have a few here. I'd never heard of them either, but my daughter wanted to buy it for my girlfriend at the time, so I thought that was really sweet. It became one of our favorite albums. Kelly and I loved that album. It's "I and Love and You." Have you ever heard that song? You haven't heard that song? Oh, it's such a sweet song. Sing it, she says, sing it. That's the name of the album, and that's the, what do you call when the song is the same as the, it's like, the sound, yeah, it's the lead song. But then there was another song on there about January Wedding. Well, Kelly's brother is a musician, and he remade that to July Wedding and sang it at our wedding. That's how much we love the Avett Brothers now. But anyway, they have another song, and I'm going to put it up here, and don't make fun of me, I'm going to put it up here. But these words of this song, it's called "Head Full of Doubt," really move me to what's going on right now. So I'm not going to sing it. I could because I listen to it all the time. "But there's a darkness upon us that's flooded in light. In the fine print, they tell us what's wrong and what's right. And it comes in black, and it comes in white, and I'm frightened by those that don't see it. When nothing is owed or deserved or expected, and your life doesn't change by the man that's elected. If you're loved by someone, you're never rejected. Decide what to be and go be it." Man, this right here says a lot to me about our students. We need to help our students decide what to be and help them go be it. And I'm not just kidding. That's kind of what we need to do every day. How many think that's hokey? It's not. It's important. It's important. So that's what I would like us to do as a campus, is, you know, not romantically love our students, but you could tell from Carl's comment that Carl loves our students. And I know many of you do, too. Paul is standing there smiling, but I know Paul loves our students. And they need to understand that. Every day, they need to come here and feel like this is a sanctuary where they're safe, and that will improve their learning. You know, Melissa is really worried about our retention, and I got her working on that, and so is Jill in the committee, working on retention. But a lot can be solved if we help our students know they're appreciated. We make safe places for them to study here, where they like to be here, all those kinds of things. So that's what I want to lead our campus to do. I was thinking, too, you know, I have a beautiful view of commencement day at our house. We love our house. And some mornings, you know how that fog sets in and just covers everything? You can almost feel it? Our students should feel us loving on them when they're here. If we can be like fog, that's what we should do. So now you all ought to be proud. You have a chancellor that dresses up like Abe Lincoln and quotes songs that nobody knows. So quickly, I'll just show some of the things that we're doing. The active discussions are going well. I think you'll get a great announcement today. I'm really thrilled with our Paulson Lecture Committee's choice for a lecture this year. Look who we've got coming. The bad thing about it, it's not till May, you know? My goodness. Can't you move it up till December 3rd? That wouldn't work. But anyway, we're cosponsoring it with the Broadway Center. It's at Pentage's. It's the co-author of the hashtag Black Lives Matters and a political analyst. I know you want to be there. By putting it Pentage's, we can have twice as many people in there. It's a great event, and that will be kind of the capstone at the end of the year. Now, there are other events. Sharon and the team have been organizing other events. Many of you have been going to them. Right now, they're concentrating on an event in January. I don't know if the date's solidified, but they're working towards January 9th to talk about public discourse, what the laws are with, you know, free speech, hate speech, all those complicated things. We need to understand those. If we're going to behave in a civil, respectful way, we need to understand, not go outside those bounds. Now, when Bree was here, she also explained about, you know, civil disobedience. Sometimes, that may be necessary. As the chancellor of the campus, it's going to have to really be something extreme before I go civil disobedience myself in front of others because we're public employees. But there's a balance in life. Anyway, students are doing things. They had a great day. Inspirational voices. They know how to do it. They serve food, and all the students show up. Today is their Day of Hope. If you have any time at all, it's from 12:30 to 2:00, and you can go in just for a short period of time and listen to the speakers. So there are active academic affairs. I wish Melissa was here this morning, but she's working on a lot. She's got the slow, long-time, drudgery kind of work that she's working on. She's trying to change our culture of hiring practices and get bias out of some of our processes. Another thing they did that I thought was really cool, and Brian, maybe John, worked on this, was this cross-campus diversity ad. They put an ad into The Chronicle in a few places that wasn't about a particular position. It was about our campus. And what a great diverse campus we have and our social justice emphasis. I think that was very well received. We'll see if it pays any pay dirt for us. Likewise, I attended the Executive Council meeting of the Faculty Assembly a few weeks ago, or maybe a week ago. They are digging in. They've done things all along. They got more things on the plate. They're planning this Day of Solidarity on January 27th. I hope I'm not preempting anything, but I didn't put what they're planning because it's all in process right now. A lot of different things going on. There's a resource page that they're putting together for UW Tacoma. There's already one for UW Seattle. Other things, we opened that prayer space or meditation space at the beginning of the year, and it's being used a lot. I think our students appreciate that. We're launching the Bias Incident Reporting Structure, and I know a lot of people want that faster. But Ricardo and his group are doing their due diligence. We want to launch it correctly. And it will happen in January is the current timing to launch that. SAES continues to host discussions. They had boards, and Sharon was working on this, too, where students could talk and write things on the board. Now, one thing we need to talk about is this sanctuary status. I think we can be a campus that embraces all those things that a sanctuary status campus can embrace, but as a UW tri-campus system, we are not going to designate ourselves that because it's a little bit like putting a target on the campus. And if something is done about the DACA proviso, you know, those campuses that have designated themselves sanctuary campuses could likely be the first ones that are affected. And there's so much at stake. All of our Pell Grants are federally funded, our NSF, our Department of Health and Human Services, NIH, all those things are federally funded. We could get ourselves into a mire of legal difficulty. I prefer, and the administration prefers, that we not designate ourselves a sanctuary campus, but do the things to protect our students. So I learned from my colleague at Bothell that there is a movement, and I've joined the movement, over 300 of us now are, we've already signed a letter that's going to all the movement, over 300 of us now are, we've already signed a letter that's going to all three branches, it's gonna go to, well, not all three branches, it's gonna go to the Congress, the new Congress, it's gonna go to the Senate, and it's gonna go to the President, and they've all signed the letter asking them to uphold the DACA rule that went in place eight years ago. So rather than waiting and hunkering down for something to happen, be proactive. Ask the new administration, let's keep this thing going, it's working really well, there's over 800,000 students now that are signed up in that. I'm not gonna say how many we, I actually don't know how many we have at our school, but I guarantee all Washington schools have these students. And many of you in the audience know more about that than me. So anyway, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna continue to support our students and not necessarily designate ourselves. So campaign, two great events coming up. The first one is kinda for us, being internal, and that's gonna be at the Swiss, and that's gonna be January 5th, and we're gonna celebrate the kickoff, kinda like we did in Seattle for the three-campus system, so I encourage you to put that on your calendars and think about attending. And then two days later, there's gonna be a more of a private event for our donors here on campus, and that's on January 7th, so you'll hear more about that soon. So you'll get some rest over the holiday, and then boom, starting January. Okay, budget development, I need to keep moving quickly here, but we continue to work on that. We have a campus budget committee that's met twice now. The first time was kind of a Budget 101 to get everybody up to speed on what's going on. The second one was, we broke into focus groups so they could talk about priorities for staff, for faculty, for the different academic units, for the different vice chancellor units, we collected all that, and we're in the process of getting that back out to the budget committee members so that we can prioritize that list. We got about 25 different things, a lot of them were similar, we can probably reduce that to 17 or 18, and there were some that were consistent over all of the breakout groups, such as student success, such as faculty and staff compensation, so those will most likely rise to the top, but we'll go through a process of prioritizing those things. So we continue to move forward, we are assuming a 4% compensation target. Once, or maybe twice, I've heard the provost say that if things don't go well with the legislature, it could be three, but they don't want to let go of the four. Also, the same direction, if we do vote "we," I don't get to vote, because I'm administrator, but if the faculty vote, or the president, I don't guess the faculty vote, the faculty input on the executive order, and then the president, if she adopts it, there will be a possibility of unit adjustments. So we'll want to do that on our campus, I'm pretty sure, if, if that's a possibility. So that could be another percent, so it could be as high as 5%. So that's good money spent, it's on compensation, but it has to come from somewhere. One of the things we need to do is closely look at the new faculty we are hiring and where our student demand is. I think in the past, we've not done due diligence on that, we haven't had all the data that we needed, so Melissa is working on getting that data available so we can more closely align those things, because it's a bit uneven now. And then Carl is putting together a team, a strategic enrollment management team, that's gonna work on those things. But anyway, we're moving forward, we're just like, we're telling our students to decide what to be and go be it, we're gonna, as a campus, decide what we want to be, we already decided, it's on the walls here, we're gonna move forward no matter what happens with the budget, we'll be good stewards, we'll be frugal, but we can't let that slow us down. We gotta concentrate on the value of what we do here, you know, not all the cost. I heard somebody say that at a, a meeting recently, it made a lot of sense to me, we need to concentrate on, on what we do. Okay. So, but you make all these assumptions, there's some realities, you know, some realities. I'm not gonna back away from the strategic plan, we currently have 100,000 last year of continuing money and 50,000 of one-time money. This year, we've put 200,000 more continuing money and 200,000 more of one-time money, for a total of 302,500. That's available, and I'm gonna show you a slide of how you get some of that in a minute. But with these assumptions, we still need about 200 new students each year to stay even, we need to build some infrastructure. I will keep pushing on this for new revenue streams on our campus, and reallocation options are in progress. Enrollment development, we did in the, where's that? Right there. 4987 is our official number, didn't quite crack 5,000, although the Seattle Times thinks we cracked 5,000. But anyway, this is where we are, so we will crack 5,000 soon. It's exciting, look at that, 8% growth. And, and what it is, is we have a campus that students know they can achieve their dreams. That's, that word's gonna get out, and more people are gonna want to come here, and I know you all want to serve them, but we have to do it in a very strategic way. We can't overwork all of you. Maybe too late for that, probably overworked some of you already. Okay. Oh, forgot to tell you about this. I don't know what's up, but I have a couple hints. I have a, a meeting with the provost, the president, and chancellor yea, next Tuesday or something, on December 6th, whenever it is, but I believe there's some concern, I know at Bothell there's concern, because at Bothell, they've had even a little faster growth than we have, and they're on a campus with a community college, and there's a prescribed ratio of students, and they're way outpacing that ratio with people wanting a UW degree. And they have housing difficulties there. We don't have those difficulties, we can build up the hill, we, financially, we might not have all the money. But another thing I, I'm sure we're gonna talk about is keeping the balance on tenure-track faculty versus non-tenure-track faculty. That's important, that we don't upset that balance, just because we're growing so fastly, let our guards down and bring on more temporary people. We don't want to do that to our students, we don't want to do that to our faculty. So anyway, we're gonna be discussing that on Tuesday, and as soon as I learn and we have some action items, I'll come back and tell you all how that went. Okay, the strategic plan, a lot of things have happened just recently, we have filled out the Strategic Plan Coordinating Committee, just in the past two days, we've filled it out. We have Liz as our Staff Association Representative, we're really glad to have her aboard. Harjat Bhajwa is the ASUWT representative, and then we have a student-at-large representative, the, the committee asked to add another student, and I believe Kent is a graduate student in social work, so we have both undergraduate, is he a graduate student? Yes. So we have both undergraduate and graduate student. Co-champions have been named for each of our six impact goals. I remember before, we had one co-champion whose job it was, or had a job that was around that, well, we had a, a call for other co-champions. They were inundated, this was exciting but also sad, we couldn't take everybody that wanted to be involved with this, but there'd be ways to get involved. Each of these impact goals may have committees, I don't know how they're gonna get their work done, but they may have committees, there'd be opportunities for you to still work on this. But we have Jill, who was a co-champion, and now we have Nico Akichong is gonna be co-champion of students. Scholarship was Tehran, Lauren is joining, Lauren Presley from the library is joining Tehran. In community, Linda was our co-champion, she's gonna be joined by Lisa Izusaki in the research office. For equity, Amanda Fiderova was our co-champion, and she's gonna be joined by Ruth, who is ill today and couldn't come. Allison Hendricks, our culture impact goal co-champion, is gonna be joined by Ricky Thompson, social professor in SIAS. And then lastly but not leastly, Carl is a co-champion, and Katie Baird, associate professor in SIAS, is joining Carl. So we have a full slate, really excited about that. When's their first meeting, Kath Lee? December 12th. So they're not gonna let grass grow under their feet, they're gonna meet and get started, they're gonna start working on this, the call, the $300,000, they're gonna start proposing things to the budget committee to spend that. The impact goal champions are gonna reach out to the people who wrote letters of intent. We got over 100 letters, or notifications, what do you call those, notifications, of people that are planning to write a proposal. So December 5th, that request for proposals will come out, January 13th, they'll ask for, or, January 13th is when they're due, okay, their request comes out the 5th, so you have about five or six weeks. And then in February, they'll announce those, and we'll also start some lightning talks, because remember, the strategic plan is not just about new stuff. The strategic plan is embracing what we already do. We talked about braiding, so we are gonna specifically make sure we let all campus know about what's already going on, what you expect of these impact goals already on campus. So that's coming too, in a series of lightning talks, things like that. So, whew. What else could you possibly need to know? So I'll take any questions. John?
You mentioned the December 6th meeting you have with the provost and the president and chancellor yea. Is, do, are, will we continue to have the freedom and the flexibility to set our own enrollment targets, or do you think that it will be likely that they will want to create some kind of a satellite campus or branch campus enrollment goal that both have to subscribe to?
Well, if I know Anamari and Jerry, which I do know them, I would say definitely not. So far, they've been extremely, not hands-off, because that, that would make you think they don't care, but they've been extremely, extremely willing to let us prepare our own destiny as long as we keep the UW brand intact. And that's part of your job, too, is helping us keep the U brand intact. I think what they, what they are gonna, and this is always dangerous to predict what your boss is thinking, so I just thought about what I was saying there, I hope she's not, I hope she is watching, so she can correct me, maybe she can correct me if I'm not thinking the right thing. I think their, their concern that we keep our eye on the ratio of faculty as we move forward, they see the rapid growth when we go report to the Board of Regents, because we just reported to the Board of Regents what our student, freshman student, and first-in-time college student enrollment numbers were, Carl did that at the last Regents meeting, they see that and think, boy, I hope that you're planning well. So I think this is a check, make sure we're planning well. Each time I've been, I started going to all the Board of Regents meetings, I don't like to, to miss those, my first got here, it kinda wasn't the culture, but after about two or three, not knowing what was going on, I thought, I'm gonna go to every one, so I make it a habit of going. And Mike McCormick, who's in charge of capital planning for the university, always says, our best opportunity for growth is at our two regional campuses. And I know Wolf's situation, Bothell's situation, they're kinda landlocked, we have the hill there. So I can't imagine, if we want as a campus to continue to serve the South Sound and the rest of Washington and the world with students who want this kind of education, I think they're gonna help us do that if we're responsible, we don't overwork Amanda or Megan, or Richard, or anybody, or Trish, I'll go down the line. If we don't overwork our staff and faculty, if we're careful about upholding the ratio, because our faculty do worry about that. Our, our faculty worry about the loss of, you know, the tenure track professoriate on our campus, so. Does that answer your question, John? Yeah. I'll be surprised if they give us some number. Come on, don't let me off the hook. No question? What's on your mind? Anybody have something they would like to say? How are things in the library? All right, good. They have a strategic plan they're working on, hint, hint. I've asked all the areas on campus to respond to this strategic plan, make it your own. Now, so you need to take your unit and now respond what you're specifically gonna do. Everything that we do in the strategic plan doesn't have to come through the initiative process, the strategic plan is supposed to affect everything we, we do. So as you do your regular work, we want you to do strategic plan-informed work, that's a new phrase, I doubt if it, well, what's that, a word they just made for the Webster's dictionary, somebody just makes the new word of the year? Nobody knows what that is?
The word of the year was xenophobia.
Yeah. What's that?
I said the word of the year this year was xenophobia.
Yeah, it was xenophobia, but I said, maybe next year we can get strategic and plan-informed work is the word of the year. It's another bad joke. Questions? Well, I don't wanna keep you here, you sure there's no more questions, no more good word for the order? Yes. He's bringing you a mic.
So you speak about diversifying our increasing revenue streams, and I'm curious and want to hear a little bit more about the Federal Way partnership. How do you see that as a revenue stream? How, what are the projections for increasing enrollment and not taking away from the primary campus here?
So, do you want me to answer that? It's two separate questions?
Three or four, if you'd like.
Three or four, okay. Well, first of all, increasing revenue streams, there's several ways to do that, and I know we're not a Research One campus, but if we can build, and I, I know we have excellent already research, research infrastructure, but we need some more, we need some more infrastructure for our faculty to help them be successful. Their content are discipline experts, they're not experts on what the NSF is looking for, proposal writing, and things like that, so we need to build more infrastructure, and then it will come, so to speak. It'll be easier, and their grants will, or their proposals will be more on target, they'll be more effective, they'll have higher hit rates, and our research enterprise will grow. And for a campus like us that's in a growing mode, all that overhead money is not yet spent. You know, on a big campus like I worked at before at Purdue, or like Seattle, a lot of that is already spent, paying for microscopes and laboratories and all that. But for us, we can deploy that towards things that we think are most important as a campus, it needs to go back into that research enterprise, and to the faculty and the staff that are working on that, but that's one area. Another is the extended campus enterprise. We have a beautiful campus here, a lot of people want to come to this campus, and we allow people to come to this campus, but I think if we're more proactive, facing outward, we could attract more people to campus and build revenue streams in. There are executive education opportunities that we're not fully embracing. Auxiliaries, I, I know that we have a lot of auxiliaries already, and all of them break even, we could make some money in our auxiliaries if we play our cards right and do the right things. So there's some examples. Federal Way. Federal Way may not increase our revenue stream immediately, it's probably going to cost us a half a person or something, but it will build some brand, some visibility for UW Tacoma in Federal Way, which is already one of our strongest suppliers of students. Aren't two of our biggest high schools from, from that area? So we may capture a few students more who can't quite make it over here all the time, but a boy, if they could start and take one class there, might bring them in. So I think Federal Way over time could help us, more so though, with, not necessarily financially, but with visibility, and other people will understand, you know, if it was up to Federal Way, they would like to have another UW Tacoma there, but that's not gonna happen, the state's not gonna pay for that, we're not gonna do for that, that would make no sense, I couldn't stand here and talk nice about Federal Way if they wanted to do that, that just wouldn't make sense. But if they want to increase a presence of the UW brand in their town center for, you know, economic development, that's a good thing that we can do for them. So I, I hope, and, and you all need to keep me honest, don't let me get carried away with this. I, I bring as many people as can fit in the bus when we go over there, so we all discuss this, you know, and, and I'll talk to you about it each time, but we're, we've kinda committed to having some kind of presence by 2018. Want to have your office over there? Maybe? Yeah. Does anybody here live in Federal Way? Couple people do, yeah, a couple people do. Other question, thank you for that question, that's good. You know, the mayor of Federal Way is a UW graduate, which probably is one of the reasons they would like a UW presence there. He was a football player as well. They probably want a football team in Federal Way, that's probably what they're after. Do you have a question, right down here?
I have. Yeah. So would you talk a little bit more about the climate on campus? The, you know, I remember the poster boards that were up, and, you know, the, you know, on one of your slides, you mentioned that there'll be some discussion about free speech, hate speech, and things like that, but would you just talk a little bit about your sense of the climate on campus and how we bring everybody together?
Yeah, I'll do the, the best I can. Well, when I came in the morning after the election, people, we don't know if they were students, employees, maybe it was John, had drawn, chalked up the sides of some of our buildings with some vulgarities about one of the, the candidates, and luckily, our grounds crew was out there getting that off. So that kinda told me right then what the potential for negative climate might be. So that day, I, I stayed in my office most of the day, reading emails, trying to decide what to do, there was a, a lot of concern and push for doing something, saying something. So we reached out and talked to Anamari's office about what she was gonna say. Fortunately for us, we haven't had any, well, I hate to say visible, because we, maybe we have, but we haven't had things that have made the news where somebody has assaulted a student, like they've had in both, you know, Seattle, the young woman got the bottle thrown at her, and then in Bothell, I think it was one young woman was confronted by several young men and asking to take her hijab, her veil off, or whatever. We haven't had that level of event on our campus. But if anything like that happens on our campus, you need to report it right away, we will not tolerate anything like that on our campus. What I was talking about earlier is, is the fear. A lot of us, you know, I came to work that day not knowing, it's not so much I'm scared somebody's gonna come and get me and, and take me somewhere, but I fear because our students have these fears and this frustration, and they don't see their future clearly. So anything you can do, and I can't talk to every student, and I know you can't all talk to every student, but in the room, we can talk to every student, so just assuring our students. Now, now the thing with a sanctuary campus, and, and John, thank you for sending me an article yesterday, he sent me an article yesterday so I could understand more about that, and there was a, a young man, Stephen something, he is a professor, a law professor from Cornell, who's been studying immigration law for 30 years, and he was being interviewed, and if you could hear him, you know, the, the immigration people could come in here, and you know, and it's a federal agency, they have jurisdiction over, you know, a municipality, kinda like the FBI. So we, we can't, you know, not do what they say, but is that gonna happen? Most likely not. What, what our president-elect has talked about is criminals, he has never talked about students, and that's why I signed this letter, we want right away to get a letter in all of those people's hands, that hey, this is a good thing, we support this, being more proactive. So there, there is climate, though, issues, because I know we had some very negative things written on some of those boards. But remember, though, we are a public institution, we are administrators, faculty, staff of the state, of this, you know, of this country that's made up of all kinds of people and all kinds of political persuasions during the- During the few days after the election, I got nasty emails from people about one person not getting elected and about the other person getting elected. Both directions, I got nasty emails. I got emails about my email, you know, how, you know, about, yeah, I won't go into that. But anyway, it's, the climate is one of uncertainty. I don't know what else to say, Linda. I'm probably just as confused about the climate as you and everybody else. We'll take each day. We will remember what our core values are, and we'll treat each other with respect. We'll treat people that come to our campus with respect. We'll obey the laws of the country until one of us wants to climb up the flagpole. Anyway, next question. Thank you, Linda. Another question? Well, these are really good questions, and I'm glad you all came here today. If you want to send me a question, if you're not comfortable asking it out loud, you know, call me. I'm going to host our two visitors for the next hour, though, but still, call me. I'll call you back. Send me an email. And have a safe rest of the day, and enjoy. Thank you for being here.